All right, welcome everybody to our regular schedule, August 12th Board of Finance meeting. Please rise as you're able for the place.
Oh, did I say August or September? Oh, nine, I'm sorry. I'm on the wrong meeting. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Sorry about that. Again, Mary, thank you. September 9th is regular meeting. All right, so any public comment? I know Rachel's here, she's on the agenda. How are you, Rachel? She didn't make those glasses, she actually buys them.
They don't sell them.
They do. No, I asked her. Super.
Must be a cool store.
Let the record show they're ridiculous.
Any correspondence, Mary?
No.
Nothing. Okay. All right, so we do have minutes from the August 12th meeting. Everybody has a copy of it. Does anybody like to make a motion or any?
I'll make a motion that we check the minutes that are written.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Oh, seven.
Okay, so everybody's there or not there will abstain. I'll try everybody's mind on the favor, see if they can say an aye. And James, are you over here? I'm sorry you're not here.
No.
Okay, good. All right. Moving on, uh, Park and Rec. We learned last, uh, last month that there was some difference in their budget and we asked for some, uh, clarity here. Uh, we did meet Brad and I with Rachel, uh, but Rachel, why don't you start off and, uh,
Honestly, as much as I love coming to all meetings, um, I, I do hate that we're here for the exact opposite reason a few years ago.
Pretty much.
It's a much better reason.
But obviously, we do understand the importance of really honing in the budget and making sure it is more accurate. I think that there were a lot of factors, uh, not a lot of factors, but a couple of factors that really affected, um, that end line, program utilization, um, this beginning of the year, last year, some of you weren't on the board last year, or two years ago, um, when we took over the before and after care program, um, there was some sort of agreement that Board of Ed employees got to go half price for before care and free for after care. So last year was the first year where we took away that, that discount and anybody that attended had to pay. That in turn affected our numbers. Uh, we were about twenty-one less kids overall in before care and twenty-one less kids overall in after care. Um, we're slowly seeing those numbers rise. Um, at, you know, the school population obviously is growing with the town growing. Um, and our preschool program, which typically in all the years I've been here, twenty years, is always crowded, always packed. And two years ago, the average was seventeen. So you could have fifteen to twenty-two kids in a class. Last year, we started the first fall, look, the first winter session at an average of ten, which took away a full staff member. It's just a fluctuation. We had a very large group of families that had multiple kids. So it was sort of like, you know, this brother was in it for two years, then the next kid came in, then the next kid came in. And there was, I think we had a graduating, pre, you know, our call of graduation, pre kindergarten class of over thirty kids two years ago. So we kind of knew going in that it might be light, but you just never know because you don't know who has kids that are preschool age. So reverse that to now, we are averaging again seventeen to twenty-one kids for this session, which is much different than last fall. Also, those of you that were on the board two years ago, when we had to come to you for the opposite reason, asking for money, um, I think just the, the pure fear, um, of ever having to have to come back to you again is Carson, my assistant and I, we were very conservative with our spending. I mean, we, we reused, recycled, um, if we had something in our closet that looked that it could be used, we used it. Um, we tried our best and we might have overcompensated in that.
No, you didn't. No, you didn't. You did good.
But, you know, so I think those are two of the main factors and, and working with Brad, thankfully, he and I have a great relationship with this. I think we were able to find that those were really the big trigger items that created that, that overall deficit. So, you know, I can talk about other programs that were down. I can, you know,
Why don't you talk about camp a little bit? Cause you made a big adjustment in camp, um, just in the way you staffed it.
Yeah, so, so the biggest part of, you know, working with Carson and going through that initial deficit, um, you know, we really looked at camp and tried to streamline it saying, okay, traditionally, you know, how I ran it was, you know, I want to hire all the Bethel kids. I love all the Bethel kids. Let's get them in. Let's, let's, let's take seventy kids, but, you know, maybe let's, our ratios were a little higher than they, they needed to be. So we really did cut down staff, um, last summer, two summers ago and last summer. This summer, we said, hey, we can get more kids at the camp. Let's hire a couple of extra people. So that kind of changed a little bit for this summer. Um, but even that, I mean, I, this was the first summer. This is Carson's third summer that we really bought supply for. Like, we were like, there's still nubs on those crayons. You can use them. Let's go. You know, we, 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 we reworked how we get t-shirts. I mean, anybody that's had kids come through here knew, knows that we have a t-shirt, a closet full of t-shirts because, you know, you would say, okay, we've got, could have six hundred kids at camp. We're going to get six hundred t-shirts. You don't need six hundred t-shirts. So we, we really changed our mentality of how we spend money. Um, you know, we, we're going to, we get t-shirts for three years. We just replenish, we change, you know, after three years, we're going to be out of the t-shirts that we've had for the last three years. We're going to get new t-shirts. We're not going to have a hundred extra t-shirts laying around for no, no good reason. I mean, if anybody wants a t-shirt, come get one. Plenty. So I, you know, I, I think last year was, I, I'm hoping an anomaly because I think if we look at where we are now, we're kind of on pace for where we were two years ago, where we did utilize our budget because we're running more programs.
Because of the size of the kids.
We have more staff because we've got more kids taking part in our program. You know, our budget is so participant-based. So if we don't have, we have before and after care and we normally have forty kids, but all of a sudden we have twenty kids, we don't staff. And even this year, we started cutting program for our staff. So after care, three thirty, we might have forty kids at Johnson, but twenty of those kids might get picked up by four thirty. You know, once we reach a certain ratio, Johnson's like a one to ten, we say, okay, this is your day, you're out. So that we're not paying people for hours that we don't need them. So I, I feel like we have the right mindset. I just, I, I think that last year was just one of those things where that caught me off guard, not using it. But I think the start of the season was very, very low for our program and our first stage.
We sat the other day and, and what I heard was that you're able to adjust your salary pretty quickly and that's where some of the savings were. And, uh, Mary sent this out because of the tennis courts. There was twenty-three thousand less in staffing.
That's not staffing. That's just, it's a program. So they, they didn't pay the instructor because they didn't run.
Oh, no, 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 I get it. No, I get it.
So it wasn't salary.
Correct. So we, we lost all the fall. Their numbers were, I mean, technically, they opened in the spring, but they did not have a lot of participants as normal because, you know, the courts weren't painted. They didn't have, you know, people were like, well, asphalt, do we really want to play on that? So their numbers were significantly down. They actually canceled some stuff, which in all the years they've been with us, with us, they haven't. Um, you know, we talked about it too, I think last budget season where we had the high school clinic line in there. You know, that's just one of those things where we may have put too much in there. The high school clinics, you know, I don't like that, how the state is doing it to, to kind of force that upon us to make those decisions if they can run. But, you know, football does it for free. Where if football did it and they have forty kids, that line is very different because we'd be paying out people. They didn't utilize it that much. Uh, we didn't have as many people come to us to run new programming. So that obviously participation was down that way. Theater did grow significantly, which is great for that program. So, you know, they did go ten over, but I know on the income side, they made up for that. And, and that's just a program that continues to grow. And then the part-time maintenance was, one of our maintainers was out for a significant amount of time from probably end of February, early March to finally coming back for most full-time now. Um, so we've had to sort of have people filling his full-time hours. And then office staff, you know, that was another line where we didn't use at all. But for us, office staff is really based on what's happening here at night. And it's not always necessarily our programming. A lot of times, like, our staff is in our office right now because planning and zoning and this. You know, so we sort of are the, the keepers of the building after hours and end on weekends.
So they're in charge of locking up after meetings.
I, yeah. So I always consider Park and Rec as, as a pay-to-play kind of, right? So there was, you're able to adjust labor and make it more profitable, right? So in the real world, if expenses are down, profits are up. Are we charging too much for the families that are probably struggling to put their kids in these programs? Is that how we adjusted to get the budget even? Or it's not even?
I think the revenue was a million. So the revenue for the year was a million, one million, six thousand dollars. So, and that was twenty thousand dollars up from the prior year. Some of that is, uh, Park and Rec used to put the money that came in for the camp trips in revenue and then they'd keep the expense on that side. That's twenty thousand dollars. So what we started doing for twenty-five is the camp money for trips gets charged back against the expense. So that's part of this too. Like, there's a little note in here. And camp came in under budget by fifty thousand. Twenty thousand of that is because we changed the way we do the trips. It's really a reimbursement. It's not revenue.
And six thousand a piece.
Right. So, but where I was going with, I think the town of Bethel's taxpayers have to have some skin in the game, right? And, and I think that we all should be able to support the programs we're having. Are we able to reduce some of the fees that some of these families may be having to try to even the budget up and make it more affordable for the families that are struggling?
I think when they went through and Rachel can answer this better, but I think when this issue initially rose the other way, they looked at all that stuff and looked at how much it costs to run camp and they were actually losing money on camp.
No, I know, but we adjusted labor and we made it more profitable.
And then they'll probably look at it again, but if you look at the first two months of twenty-four, uh, Park and Rec spent six hundred thousand dollars between salaries and programs. Twenty-five, it was five hundred thousand. Twenty-six, it's back to six hundred thousand. So some of it is twenty-five was a blip down in enrollment on a lot of stuff. And some of it is they overcorrected because of the fear of what happened, right? So I think they're leveling out. So should they look at what we charge for some of the programs again? For like the twenty-seven season? Cause that camp's the biggest driver of it, right? Probably, but I think they're, I'm guessing they're going to look at it all the time now.
When you compare us and that to the richer towns, even though
Yeah, because I hate that argument. I really do.
No, but I think that we're very reasonable for what we offer. Is if you break down what we actually charge for camp, I think it comes to like five or six dollars an hour for, for the hours that they're there. I, I think that we're very reasonable, reasonably priced for the amount of time the kids are at camp. And the other things are options. The kids don't have to go on trips if they don't want to. And we have kids that do that. And listen, we have a handful of parents that will ask us, hey, I want my kids to go to camp. Can you help us out? And we do, whether it's payment plans. You know, we're working with the Friends of Bethel Park and Rec who now are starting to get like a scholarship fund, um, so that we can drive them places because the social service department isn't the great department here, but they have very high standards of how you qualify for aid. And sometimes, you know, Joshua just doesn't meet that, but they really need it. So we always work with families. We have plenty of parents, plenty of families that are on payment plans. You know, the schools reach out to us and say, listen, if this kid can't go to after care, he's going into DCF care. We let him in the after care. Like, we, we don't have any problems ever doing that. We all, if, if parents ask, families ask, that's without question because we are service. We want kids to be able to participate. So we never say no to people and figuring out ways for them to be able to take programs. You know, we never ask for money upfront. That's why sometimes, you know, before care, we, we've signed up people for the entire year, but people pay every month. So we may have somebody paying ten thousand for after care and before care for their, their many kids, but they're really paying that throughout the ten-month period. And sometimes people pay throughout the twelve-month period if they need to.
To catch up.
Yeah.
I would imagine that you're constantly looking at, uh, the cost of service. Not just, you know, every few years. I, I would imagine with people, every season, looking at what you should be charging, whatever, you know, what the values are.
And, I mean, even on preschool programs, you know, those are, I feel very reasonably priced for the amount of hours that the kids are there for. You know, um, and the amount of attention and the amount of care that they're getting, I think those are, our programs are reasonably priced. Now, you know, at times, I think everybody at times can't afford something, but if somebody came to me and said, and they do, and we always tell them, just send us an email. We'll create a payment plan. We'll send it to you. We'll get the kids in. Like, we have no, we've never ever said in the way somebody, because they looked at us and said, tell us they can't, they can't pay it done. We try to figure it out.
I've been waiting all day for Bob Manfredo. You, I know, you've got to ask some questions.
I have three questions, going from most detailed to least detailed. I'm just curious, on the summary sheet, the variance summary, this is probably Brad. I saw the fifteen thousand, I forget additional.
Yeah.
Why doesn't that just offset that, like, the full-time person doesn't?
So the full-time person had, so our employees here have short-term disability and long-term disability, and they can supplement it with their sick time. So in essence, that person that was out was full day.
Not workers' comp.
Not workers' comp. If it was workers' comp, the check from karma would have come back. Come back. And we would have put that against the salary line and added.
So it's, oh, short-term.
Yeah.
So you get both hits.
Yes.
Oh, yeah. Rachel, it sounds like you said that you feel more confident that you understand a steady state for fiscal year twenty-six. So when this board, a year from now is looking at the fiscal year twenty-six budget, I, I assume that you're thinking, well, we kind of now know ste- steady state. We've got a big budget, right? We talked about it. The Park and Rec budget is one of the five or six, seven-figure budgets. So it's a big budget.
Two million plus, yeah.
Yeah. And so, you know, variances of even a relatively small percentage can be a big dollar about. What do you think? Now that we're two months into fiscal year twenty-six, feeling good, confident?
I have, because, I mean, if you really look at our budget, our biggest ticket item towards that budget is usually camp. You know, the, the biggest programs that we run are before and after care, our camp, and I wouldn't even call it in-town basketball a large program. You know, it's medium. Um, you know, I think those are really the biggest drivers of a lot of our lines within our budget. You know, and not even just day camp, but just our camps in general that we run because we run so many different, between sports camps and STEM camps. There's so many. So I feel like our biggest budget item is from June, July, and August. You know, end of June, July, and August are the, are the biggest factors in our, you know, our salary ranges or expenses and all that.
I think looking at the next, so Rachel and I spent a lot of time looking at twenty-five. We started looking at twenty-six. That's the next thing that Rachel and her assistant are going to dig into, like, what camp costs versus what the daughter's going to cost. I think we're trending to being under, not two hundred thousand on there. Uh, but it all depends on what the next ten months look like. You know, like, it could be, there could be five new programs that want to start and she might go, yeah, we have the money for that or we don't. Theater could, the numbers could drop off. Some of those kids could age out of it. You know, it hasn't. Theater's been a rocket ship of involvement, but.
I, I don't think we should be creating, I, I think, I think the programs that Park and Rec have and the town could afford, I don't think we create new programs just because we had two hundred thousand dollars to burn at the end of the year. I mean, we got
Which this is an obvious example of she didn't do that.
No, no, I know. I know. I'm saying, we, we don't want to, we don't want to think, oh, you know, hey, we did really well here and everybody was happy. And now, you know, I still had fifty, you know, we burned up a hundred and fifty new programs.
But I think that's why, um, so twenty-five, twenty-six was Rachel's first, like, really detailed budget. If you think about the timeline of all.
We're talking a short term that she's been involved. There was things pretty
And I'll say it, and I think you walked into a crazy mess. I mean, there was a lot of variables.
Um, and like with the twenty-five budget is the first year that we had a line for new programs. In part because of the CICA change in the way the, is that, they said, whatever, that one. Um, so, but it made sense to have a line in her budget for new programs, right? Cause in the past, they didn't. And then somebody wanted to add a new program and it would be a lot of bringing money. And then they would go over budget. But it used to be like thirty, forty thousand dollars over budget, but their revenue would go up by a hundred. And it wasn't as big of a deal.
At the end of the day, but they're still spending more than.
Where we needed every crumb, right?
Yeah.
And I think over the last couple of years, we spent a lot of time taking expenses that shouldn't have been in, under this umbrella of Park and Rec and moving them around where they should be. Maintenance, highway. I mean, there was a lot of different charges that I think that
But I think even for this current budget, we moved a lot of things, more fixes, salary line, because they were in, like, our office staff was in expenses, but they're all salaries. So like, we tried, slow the trip. I feel like this budget that we're in now is one of the cleaner budgets that we've had in the, in the three years. Um, because we've tried to make it more simplified to look at, to say, this is where this money comes from. It doesn't come from here. This is where this is going. So, you know, I, I think that we have a good, and, and fortunately, I'm not the person that tries to figure things out on my own. You know, I, I like to ask for help and I like to ask questions. Brad knows this. I drive crazy. I drive plenty crazy. You know, so I feel like we're in a good place with this budget. I feel like we're, we're trending the right way. Not to spend just to spend, but to make sure that we're using the money how we, I plan to use it for this year.
Well, even, uh, the number would have been a little bit varied because she had money left in maintenance. But Rachel and I talked in like May, like, that's, you only do throughout the year what you absolutely have to do. And then come May, you see what your maintenance line looks like and go, all right, that needs upgrading. It's really outdated. And then, all right, that's six grand for that piece of equipment. You buy that piece of equipment at the end of the year because you know what's left. You know, like, that's how I tell all the departments to operate. Um, so we kind of run tight. Some of it is, we did a lot of preaching to the department heads off route last year because we thought utilities was going to be a five hundred thousand dollar problem. It's at ninety-five, it's going to go up a little bit, but it, it wasn't as big of a problem because natural gas came down. Things can't, like, a couple of things finally started breaking, right? But we, Dan and I did a lot of preaching to the department heads last year that twenty-five could be a really bad budget because that was, utilities was a problem. It wasn't as big of a problem as we thought, but it could have been a four, five hundred thousand dollar problem before July went hit of twenty-four.
You know, you mentioned energy costs, right? So we can't predict it. We could, I guess we could forecast it, but we don't know exactly where it's going to be. But our responsibility is to have a soft landing every June for the, for the taxpayer and make sure that we tax them just enough to have all services in the town running, right? So when I see a two hundred or a four hundred thousand where we overcharge the taxpayer, you know, that makes me feel uncomfortable that we took too much in taxes. We didn't have a soft landing and take exactly what we should have.
Yeah, which I completely understand. I also preach to all the departments that we only spend what we have, right? Like, so there's a balancing act there of like,
Well, because you can't predict what's going to break next week.
Yeah. And some of it is like the rap on the board that I don't think this was true, but the, we're on the street, it's always the paper trucks come in.
I heard the same thing. That was the board of it.
I know, but that's, that was
I thought I said Park and Rec.
But that was always though, like, oh, we got to spend it. And like, under Bob Kozlowski and myself, it's been, been kind of tight on stuff. And you, you know, like, you kind of wait till the end of the year. Like Nick knows this, we bought a server that we probably didn't absolutely need three months ago recently because we wanted to make sure that we had the money for it. You know, like, but it, it was a need. It just wasn't an absolute need.
Well, that's, that's refreshing for the taxpayer to know that we had enough and we were, we made sure we had enough. We didn't go back to, you know, the balance fund or something to try to.
Yeah. So it is a balancing act. Some years, like this is a year that especially where we thought we were going to be with utilities, that a lot of things broke right. We refinanced the bonds. That's a two hundred thousand dollar savings. Park and Rec's at one ninety-one right now. It'll probably be like one eighty, one seventy, because there's probably a couple of things in twenty-six that should have been twenty-five. Um, so there are some, you know, like, a lot of things then broke right. Um, some of it is, we went bi-weekly with our payroll. So there's one less weekly check in this year. The adjustment to the accrued payroll, now I'm talking nerdy Bob stuff, Bob. Um, accrued payroll entry got booked, but because our payroll number was high, according to orders from the prior year, it wasn't as big of a number, you know, like, but that was one less payroll that hit this year. So, and we're kind of, I talked to the auditor once about it. I'm going to talk to him about it again because I don't want to create a twenty-six problem because we went bi-weekly. You know, like, but there's still a lot of moving pieces in this, but right now, I've moved a million dollars in there. We know some other things are going to hit, but we're nine twenty-six to the good. But we know this is almost two hundred thousand. We know the bond refinancing is two hundred thousand. We know employee benefits is almost two hundred thousand. Uh, we have, we had three full-time vacant, full-time positions vacant for most of that year. So that's driving employee benefits.
Carrying the salaries.
But, and we carried the salaries. Um, so like, there is a lot of, the vacancies are kind of bad because the problem is we can't, we couldn't fill, like, the health vacancies are bad. We just can't fill them. Um, but in the meantime, that money's going to go back to the fund balance because we're not spending it.
They did without.
Um, you know, Laura might be working twenty hours a week. Uh, but they're getting it done, but they just can't hire the person that they need. And they're not going to just go out and hire to hire because it's going to be the right person. And it's, it's miniscule. It's hard to get rid of people unless they're really bad. So it, you have to be really selective with what, who you hire. So.
Well, at least this is a good conversation, right? Cause there was some really bad ones over the last couple of years, but this board invested in the market rec because we knew it was important and we made those big adjustments when we knew there was big holes to fill. And moving forward, if we just adjust it, that we got a smooth landing every year. I, I think it's great for all of, all of them.
I think Bob has one more question.
It's supposed to be the, the easy one.
Not, not to belabor the
I actually thought the fifteen thousand was pretty easy, but god damn.
Not, not to belabor the discussion, I think. It's gangly. I would suggest maybe that there is a philosophical question about whether, when, when you all say you think you're at steady state. Is that consistent with saying, well, we may add progress, maybe this, give, take at the most simplified level? A budget is put together, right? This is what we plan to do. And folks, don't deviate. At least
Shouldn't change it in the
The world, the worlds that I operated in, when somebody had a budget, kind of had to stick to the budget. There wasn't a whole lot of freelancing that could be done during the year for uncertainties. So I, I would just, we don't need to address it now, but think about whether, when we say it is steady state, whether it's Park and Rec or any other department. And frankly, to kind of echo John's point, we've had a lot of discussions over the last couple of years, Rachel. And you guys have done a great job. You've proven that you know this stuff, this budgeting stuff, as well as everybody, if not better than most, right? So, so it is a, a question maybe to work with you on. Again, is this a steady state? One where there's really no freelancing going on in the budget because we've gone, again, echoing John, we've gone to the public. And we said hand on heart, we think this is what the town needs to provide the services you want. And that to me seems like a commitment to kind of know what we want and provide. Again, that's a philosophical discussion for later, so.
Well said.
Thank you.
Anybody else for Rachel? You can breathe now, Rachel.
I've seen some worse meetings, but you, you know, when you have the old committee there, you know, backing you up like you were on the football team.
They just liked me that much, that's all.
For good reason. They were ready.
Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you, guys. Ladies.
Alright, the control report, Mr. Brad.
So I gave.
About the million-dollar move here.
So I posted the, I did the journal entry to move the million dollars in CNR. Um, as they told me we were going to.
Well, I knew you were going to.
I know, but I just, you know, I'd like to not do it and reverse things. Um, so that's the biggest change on the expense side. Um, the. Biggest thing I want to talk about briefly at, with the revenue. So right now the revenue's two point seven million dollars to the good. Um, we are getting close to going to trial on a large, um. There's a large company in town that appealed their assessment or is fighting their assessment for the last two years. Uh, there's been some going back and forth. Uh, we're getting ready to go to trial if that is solved. We're gonna owe them back money in a credit. Um, obviously, twenty-five's to the good, two point seven million dollars. I'm just telling you that. When this thing's finished, if that is done, before this audit is done for twenty-five, the two point seven will drop. Um, we knew we carried a little bit more in the tax revenue because that assessment was out there. Um, so.
Did you say if we lose it, that it's two point five million, right?
No, no, I didn't say any dollar amounts because this is a recording meeting and they're going to trial.
Okay, so you can't say it could be as high as.
Right. Yeah, the. You're looking at, it could be like the, the tune of like five hundred thousand dollars a year.
Okay, thank you.
So, and it's two years worth because it was twenty-four and twenty-five. So if they get in their way. There might, we might owe that person a million dollars. And hopefully if that is, whatever that number is. Probably gonna adjust June thirtieth because otherwise we're gonna have a huge problem in twenty-six. So we're, you know, like, but we knew. They knew, we've known that they've been appealing it. Um, I've had conversations with the chairman about it for the last couple of years, what I've kind of been carrying. Uh, obviously, we can't talk about them publicly because it would kind of give our hand away. Um.
Even though they were appealing it, did they pay it? So it's.
Yes, because otherwise they owe interest.
God forbid we lose their suggestion.
Yeah. Um, so, and you don't, if you do lose, you don't typically owe back, you just owe a credit. But if we know that that credit's coming and it's from prior years before we finish the audit, we will put that credit on the books. Um, so, and that'll, because we're carrying a lesser number in our. In our grant list because we knew that they were appealing, um, that's in part why our general tax revenue. Was up. One, it's usually up, but it's up a little bit more because of that. Same thing in twenty-four. We just didn't talk about it a lot. Nick, the chairman's known about it. Uh, I think Bob, you and I talked about it a couple of years ago too. Uh. Just, you know, just kind of a general and not, not, that didn't happen in a vacuum. Like it wasn't a decision that Dan and I made. It was a decision that. Uh, Nick was brought in. I think we talked about it at our different meetings.
Uh, and if, and if it didn't go our way, would we pay. Uh, yearly or or if the credit, they get to use it in the first year or that credit gets broken up?
That credit gets put on the books.
That's what I mean. We're gonna put it on because we've got room.
So say it was, say you overpaid on your house by five grand, John, you would have a five thousand dollar credit.
No, I know, but if I paid five over, if I paid over five grand if over a two-year period.
Yeah.
You said they get a credit. They get to use the credit all the one year.
Yeah.
Until it's gone, okay.
Yeah, so they'll get it.
So even though it might have been two years of taxes, they get to use the credit all up.
Yeah, so if they, if they, say they're paying a million dollars a year in taxes. And it should have been five hundred thousand. Year three, whenever it's settled, they'll have a million dollar credit. And it'll take them two years to use it because their tax bill will now be five hundred thousand. But it'll sit on our books as a large credit still, so.
But the same, it's been sitting in our accounts, putting interest to them.
Correct.
And they're not paying interest, so they're happy with that.
Correct. Cause if they lost.
Exactly.
Tax collector by law charges eighteen percent.
Yeah, they could gamble that too, yeah.
Yeah. Uh, so, um, that's kind of twenty, uh, June thirtieth, twenty-five. Uh, August thirty-first, twenty-five. Um, interest is at three sixty-eight. We haven't even booked one of the accounts yet because it comes in late. Um, we're already at fifty-six percent, but we knew that number was gonna be high. Um.
You get excited to open up that email or envelope to see what.
Oh, I will. That's my favorite. I get excited. That's the one I usually do like the first of the month. Um.
I open up an envelope, it's much smaller.
I think we talked about it after the state set their budget, but, um, town aid roads, the state after we set our budget. Up their town aid road number from three thirty that it's been for the last thirteen years to four forty. Um, but even though they did that, it's always nice when that first payment comes in and it's two twenty and you go, okay. They're actually gonna give it to us. Um, so that's up a little bit on the revenue side.
Can I just ask, what is that? Does that mean the state is paying to fix our roads?
Yeah, so the state gives you money every year. You have to use it for road construction, road maintenance. I think you can use it for like clearing the roads. Um, we do way more than that in road construction every year. So the report we sign, we just go road construction. You know, but it, so from a mill rate standpoint, the million fifty or whatever we have in roads. Mill rate wise, because we had on the books, the three thirty is really seven twenty.
Okay.
We don't spend a million. It's just, we knew this was gonna come every year, but uh, and this year happened to be a little more.
Right, so we're spending, we're spending a million, but three thirty. It's coming back from the shake.
Correct, yeah.
Cause we cut the roads this year. We cut the road budget.
No, the road kept flat.
No, we stayed, we stayed. We cut the increase.
Alright, yeah.
Remember, the increase cut your road.
My road just got fixed today.
I know that.
And then on the expense side, um, Park and Rec's higher percentage than you would expect two months in, but it's camp.
Camps.
And other summer programs. Everything else is in line. That's percentage-wise is huge, but that's gonna be exactly what we budgeted for. Um, it's just the timing. When we refinanced, then suddenly everything was due, I think in July, August fifteenth or July fifteenth. Um, and town insurance is, we pay it quarterly. Um, but we know because we switched carriers for health insurance, employee benefits shouldn't be a pretty good number for twenty-six. Um, it all depends on, like, we've had a couple of retirements. If they retire with a. Single and then we hire somebody to replace them with a family, that all cuts into it. But it's gonna be a good number because we switched from the partnership plan to, uh, United. Um, and that's kind of where we're at because it's two months of the year, so there's not a ton in there.
Anyone have any questions for Brad? Someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we accept the control report of, of, um, of September ninth.
Okay, we have a second? Chairman, is mine all in favor? Could you say aye? I think that's the last thing on our agenda, so I would accept the motion for the term. Alright, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you, everybody. Thanks for coming up.
Good to see you, Mr. Manfredo. Thanks, sir.